Next question goes first to Ben Walters. What is your overall opinion of the 2014 Economic Development Strategic Plan currently in place?
I think it's a great move forward. It's a very bold statement and I'm totally for the whole thing. Economic Development Group has done some great ideas and I believe that it is working. The Maryland Avenue Redevelopment Program is on its way. I believe it's going to go without any major hiccups. The people are still remaining there that are tied to their homes, I understand. Eminent Domain has been used or has been mentioned. I will never vote for that in this particular instance. That is not appropriate and I don't think the city would ever do that, none of it. But the development there gives us a chance for the people in Cumberland to service people that come off the highway. Between Morgantown and Hagerstown, there is no way to stop except Levee. And they've capitalized on that. Let us capitalize on the same thing. The amount of money coming through this town every weekend is amazing and never touches us. When you talk to the tourists that drive through Common, that's exactly what they say. "What a beautiful town. I saw the steeples. I should have stopped, but we were in a hurry. We're going somewhere." But now, when they see a sign to a restaurant that they recognize, something they know, something nationwide, they will pull off, they will go there, and it gives us an opportunity to interact with them and bring them back the second time. Make a good first impression. I believe that once one side is done, the north side will be done by itself. Private festival buy-up houses. There are already people have done so on the east side. I understand that if somebody really interested in the area further to the south of Martins, in that area from the railroad. So all in all, it looks really good and I'm looking forward to really some solid growth there and to give us an opportunity like it's in many cities that have been cut by a highway that use both sides to generate economic developments.
Thank you, Ben. Dave?
Well, I think this goes back to, you know, the can and the road. You know, we've paid for studies in the city over the years, either to ignore them or not implement them. I think the current, or excuse me, the previous economic plan was outdated. We all got together and decided to get a new plan implemented and we were following through with it. This new plan gave us direction that we didn't have before. Implementation has shown results. Look around over the past couple of years. All the projects that have came on board and are currently in the process are a result of the new economic plan. You know, I supported it then, I support it now.
Thank you, Dave. Eugene?
Alrighty. I support the things that they're trying to do. I just don't support the way they're trying to do it. Let's talk about the Maryland Avenue project there which was brought up, you know, and eminent domain. I'm definitely against eminent domain. If this was being a high school or a highway put in there, I'd be for that. What bothers me is that I think it was poor planning. I think they have good ideas, but poor planning. Had they talked to these people in that area there, for instance, and had some public forums with them and talked to them, they would have found out they had a court that didn't want to do this and that it found out it's going to cost us a lot of money. And I heard somebody say here they think it's going to go through. It might go through, but it's not going to be next week, it's not going to be next year. It's going to be a while and it's going to cost the city money. The only people going to make money on this here is going to be the attorneys for the city, well, he's paid that way, and then attorneys for the people because this is not going to go away. Each one of these property owners is going to get their day in court. It's not an overnight thing. Had they planned this properly, we could have maybe talked to these people in advance and not snuck in the back door on them and they may have come along and said, "Hey, you know what? We'll work with you. We'll see what we can do." And one more thing, they keep hollering at, with these people, it's all about the money down there. And some of them I know personally, a couple of them I graduated high school with, and it's not about the money down there. You know what I mean? So this bothers me, the way they're treating these people there. But as far as going around what they want to do with the area, I don't have a major problem with it other than the fact that I wish that they would consider something other than, all I've been told so far is going to be a restaurant and maybe some parking areas and maybe a couple of little small businesses. I'd rather see us develop the areas into having like distribution centers or warehouses where they pay better.
Thank you, Eugene. Joshua?
Yeah, so like I said before, I'm very happy with the direction that Cumberland is going. I'm happy with the mall project. I think that we need to continue to pay close attention to small business because that's a huge portion of new jobs in America today. I don't know that the eminent domain is being thrown around as much as what everyone says it is, but that's not something that I would support. I believe that it would really come down to how many properties were down there. If it's one property in the middle holding up millions of dollars worth of my neighbors' tax money, then yeah, then I think that maybe I would support it then. But as the way that things are now, I think that we just need to really stick with talking to these people and trying to find the best solution that's going to be for everybody, definitely not go into war over it. I think that we definitely all need to really keep a good dialogue going. But as far as everything else for the Economic Development Plan, I'm pretty happy with things. I think that things are really, really moving forward in Cumberland.
Thank you, Joshua. John?
Well, I am very satisfied with the economic plan and what has been developed in Cumberland so far. Since we are talking about the Rolling Mill Project and the Maryland Avenue Project, I support it. I believe it is the catalyst that we need. I think that it just snowballs and I mean that from a positive perspective. I mentioned just last week at a dinner function we were all attending that I referenced Washington, Pennsylvania, who decided that the exits off Interstate 79 were valuable. I think Cumberland can do the same thing. I certainly support that. I would agree with Eugene in that maybe the approach could have been a little bit different, but the project now is there, so we need to move forward with that project. I certainly believe in negotiations, but the time has come to decide how we're going to move forward. We need to get going. I think, again, as an economic catalyst, I think it works. I think it just moves on its own after. If you can make it successful, and I believe we can, once we get that success rolling, we're fine. I think we should get down and talk to those people some more and I would agree with Joshua. I don't hear that eminent domain piece being thrown around as much as people contend that it is. So I would support anything that allows for negotiation, but I certainly would put forth any efforts possible to make sure that project goes. It cannot linger for years. It has to move now and now's the time to act. And again, I referenced small towns that have interstates running through them who have made progress. I think the time for Cumberland has come and I think it's time to move with the project.
Thank you, John. Let's talk a little bit more. The Rolling Mill, Maryland Avenue Project is one portion of the Economic Development Strategic Plan. Let's stay with that theme. The last question was with regards to the overall plan. The next question is specific to the Rolling Mill Project. So I'd like to give you all the opportunity for two more minutes. Many of you addressed the Maryland Avenue Project directly. I'll give you this opportunity to go back and if you want to add to that or to talk about other aspects of the plan, please feel free to do so. So with that, we will start with David Caprilli.
We spoke the other evening at the South Cumberland Business Association and this comes down to re-establishing tax base. Revenues have continued to decline in the city. You can only do two things. You can cut costs, which are services. Are we going to pull more police off the street or cut the fire department more? Come on, we're trying to raise more revenue here. We could not afford not to pursue this project. It was a targeted area in our widely-publicized new economic plan. It could potentially raise revenue in this sector for three to four times. This whole section of town will be brought forward. More dollars off the freeway will be coming into the city of Cumberland. The people that proposed new projects, we're almost out of cans to kick down the road. You know, I said that earlier. Doing nothing is no longer an option. If you're opposed to this project and projects like this, you're opposed to project, excuse me, you're opposed to progress in the city of Cumberland. Eminent Domain has not been an option. We have not mentioned it. We're not going forward with it. The Institute of Justice has used it as a scare tactic to raise funds for their cause. They put up two billboards. What are they going to do with the rest of the money they raised for this issue? They're going to move on to the next town. They don't care about the people up there. Read the two most recent articles in the newspaper. All the people down there have been treated with respect. I think people from the Economic Development Committee have actually gone and physically helped some folks move. So, I mean, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Eugene?
Well, this is a sore subject with me. First of all, like Dave said, you know, this is something that's been started now, so now we have to finish it. So don't think for one minute that I don't want to solve this problem, you know. I just wish it would have been handled differently in the beginning. And as far as saying, everybody's saying, "Oh, eminent domain has been mentioned." Well, that's not true because like I said, known people in the area, they did a thing where they got Freedom of Information Act and some of the emails and stuff like that, eminent domain was brought up. So don't sit there and let them say it's never been brought to the public. They've been talked, it's been talked about. And as far as everybody being treated fairly, let's talk about Susan Boyer. Susan Boyer lives down there and she has a home and the city come along a couple of years ago and told her, "Hey, you got asbestos" because her esprit was breaking down. You got to do something with it. She said, "I don't have the money." Well, they helped her secure a loan. She got the loan, $30,000, and then fixed it all, siding and everything. Nice looking place. Then they come along a year or two later and tell her, "We want to buy your property now." And they offer her, she didn't give me the exact figures, but what she told me and I talked to her personally was she was still owed $5,000 on her home and not have a home, you know. And my problem is with this. I'm not against progress. I want us to do something with the area. I just don't want to step over to people to do it. You know what I mean? I'm a people person. I love Cumberland. The citizens of Cumberland is like my family. I've lived there all my life. And I know, like I said, I personally know some of the people down there and I don't want to step on them so I can get ahead. So we need to get together and talk to them and work with them and see if we can't solve this issue.
Thank you, Eugene. Joshua?
Yeah, so there's some stuff here that is right and things that aren't right. As far as that person in particular, I was told that they did not go to any further negotiations. So my call to these people would be to seek out those negotiations, continue the dialogue with Cumberland and try to do the best for everyone. And I think that the city is trying to do the best that they can for everybody, but the negotiations cannot stop. Like others have said, the project is there. There's no going back. There's no getting our money back. There is no refund at this point. So these people that don't think that they've been treated fairly, I think that they cannot cut off that dialogue. That dialogue has to stay open until it's done and over with.
Thank you, Joshua. John?
Yes, sir. I believe in the Rolling Mill Project and I believe it must move forward. I have said that since day one and I still believe that's what we need to do. I agree that much has been invested and the time again is to move forward. Negotiations, I mentioned it last week. I think we can still treat people with respect. I don't think anyone's out to destroy anyone. I think that there are times that we can sit and talk, but I think we have to continually go back to the table. If it's an issue that came about and wasn't resolved, go back to it. You know, I don't know. I think a build-around may be a possibility. I don't know that that's the greatest idea and I don't know that that will work. I just know that we need to move the project forward. Now, again, we talk about services and we talk about the cost of fire, police and EMTs. I would believe that most people, when you push the 911 button, want that fire truck and that police officer and EMT to come. Those costs are getting higher and higher, so we have to find ways to fund those. If we want to keep them in place, and I think most citizens want those services, then we got to find a corporate tax base like Rolling Mill to support those endeavors. If you want the services, you have to pay for them. I heard it mentioned a couple of times. Those things are expensive. They are expensive. So do you want to keep them? Then we got to find creative ways and creative ways to pay for them, to maintain them. I think Rolling Mill is one of those projects. Respect for people, I'm all behind that. You know, I've been a social worker all my life, so I understand people's feelings and I understand what that means. Negotiation, get to the table, talk, back and forth, back and forth. Whatever it takes, move the project forward. We cannot go back, cannot waste any more money. We have to move the project forward.
Thank you, John. Ben?
The Rolling Mills area was already about, I'm guessing now, 10, maybe 12 years ago, determined to be an area where the increase, continuing increase in blight and crime would lead to a neighborhood that was unsustainable to resurrect itself. So something had to be done. And about, I think, 10, 11 years ago, there was a new plan for planning and zoning and they rezoned the whole area in three public health meetings where nobody showed up from the area. And later on, it was brought to Mayor and City Council and I don't know if anybody showed up at that meeting, but it was voted on to rezone the area in highway commercial, which means it will now be used primarily for property that will house businesses that highway users will use. And that's exactly what the Rolling Mills Project does now. So it's hard to see the people who knew years ago, or could have known because it was in the paper, their area was rezoned, never showed up. Basically, what it means is you cannot build a new house there if you tear one down. And if you tear a house down and left with an empty lot, that creates trouble no matter what. So now that we're on this way for the Rolling Mills Program, I think it's a great project. I'm totally for it and I know it'll go. There are people who have not contacted the city yet. The people who have sold, obviously have. So it leads me to believe that some of the people remaining have not contacted the city at all, even talked to them. So maybe the city can step forward and seek them out to start the dialogue. I see that thing as the catalyst for this city. Absolutely. There is nothing that I can think of right now that would do it faster and better than that project. So we need to go forward. And I see no problem eventually with people leaving the houses. It's going to happen. It's not going to be happened by police enforcement, that kind of thing. It's going to be through negotiations.
Thank you, Ben. The next question will go first to Eugene Frazier. Do you feel a redesign of the Baltimore Street pedestrian mall is necessary? And are you supportive of option 3A1 as recommended by the Sage Policy Group and McCormick Taylor? Why or why not?
Okay, yes. I am in favor of doing something to downtown mall. This was done back in the late 60s and 70s all across the United States. And since then, I did some more reading up on it, you know, it's well over 200. And now, like 85% of them have failed and been opened up again. And we have to do something because back then, they did what they thought was best to create businesses and more income downtown. It didn't work, so we have to do something. And I agree. What I don't like is I've talked to a couple of businesses down there and I don't want to hurt any of the existing businesses, the ones that have been down there and going through this the whole time. And so, you know, I'm not going to mention any particular ones, but I don't want to hurt the ones that are there. And one of the things that I don't want to see is they put in there that they want to have a bicycle lane and I would opt out of that. I'd rather see where we just share the road down through there. Speed limit, we had at the city council meeting there, they brought that up and the speed limit's going to be about 5 mile an hour, so I don't see why a bicycle would have a problem with that going down through there. So I'd rather see share the road. That gives us nine more feet of space that we can use, you know what I mean, to help pedestrians and the businesses down there. And like I said, and I think that, like I said, we need to open up because I also did some study, some reading up on it too, and it found out too that, you know, when people are able to drive down through and all, they can look and see and observe and then more after parking go in. When they can't do that there, you know what I mean, they just say, "Ah, heck with it. Going back to business. I'll go to Levee," whatever. So I'm definitely in favor that we open that up and I want to see as, and I like the idea also that they can close it all for events and everything all. So I'm 100% in favor of doing what they're doing with the exception of the bicycle lane.
Thank you, Eugene. Joshua?
Yeah, I'm also for opening the mall for cars and bicycle traffic. I differ from Eugene on the bicycle lane. I think that the way that, where Cumberland is located with the Sino Canal and the Allegheny Passage and stuff like that, I believe that the bicycle lane fits right into our community. I believe that the new traffic through the downtown will make businesses more visible, parking to those businesses more accessible. The current plan, as I hear it, does not support those fears that these businesses won't have that outdoor dining. I know that that was a huge concern, was the outdoor dining. As far as I know it, the plan will support that outdoor dining and still will be able to accommodate Cumberland Comes Alive, Farmers Market and the other needs for the community. So yeah, I'm definitely all for it.
Thank you, Joshua. John?
Yes, sir. I support it. Believe it 100%. Looked at the study. I think the study has great possibilities for downtown. I do believe drive-through traffic is a good advertisement. You can see what's available. You can see what's not available. You may find a developer driving through town who thinks this is a pretty good place to maybe open a small business. I think one lane, one way is a good plan. The sidewalks are going to be widened to 23 feet, so the downtown outside dining still exists. If we get things like the boutique hotel on the upper side, not a problem. I think that the infrastructure shot, so something has to happen. It cannot, it's not, we're not talking repair. We're talking replace. So if we're going to start moving in that direction, then I think we move in a direction that says, "Let's revamp and let's see what it produces." The mall opened in 1978. In the beginning, that was right. Gene's right. That's what happened in the early days. That was the plan. That's what everybody did. Now it's time to regroup and rethink. I think the Sage Plan is a good one. I think it does permit our town to be exposed more and as Joshua just said, it's a town that attracts people. Well, I think that's another way to attract some people. So shop owners downtown, yes, it does. They say, the few that I've spoken with, believe that if you can get people closer to their shops, they get more business and that's what it's all about. Maybe open up a few more of the empty storefronts and see what we can do. And I understand that there's some people there who are concerned about where their businesses are going and what's going to happen. Again, that process of negotiating and being civil and talking things through certainly has merit and I believe we certainly can come up with some conclusions that are positive for everyone. So again, I support the plan that's presented.
Thank you, John. Ben?
Well, it's a shame I only get two minutes. I could talk about this for a long, long time, Stu. When you look at the businesses that are there right now in the downtown mall, they've all been established after the mall was closed to traffic and became a pedestrian mall. So these people had a business model, a business plan that included the pedestrian mall and built their business on that. So we have to keep that on one side. I will not stand in the way of anybody trying to create more business in this town because we know we can use it. That hotel is a great idea. We know we can have more hotels. We're building them right now. At the Pilot Fuel Plaza, we built one there. Levee got one recently, so we know we can have more hotel rooms. A hotel needs access for traffic, passengers, their guests, valet parking. So I can see the idea of starting the east side of the mall to become that drivable area for automobiles. The west side, I don't see it. And the reason is we need an area where people can just walk. If you look at cities that have done well with a closed mall to traffic, you see that the price of the buildings on those streets are skyrocketing because people want to be there. So there is more to it than just driving through and looking at it. People still go to the mall, park outside the mall, walk inside, and I'm talking now at the Country Club Mall, and walk all day up and down to the stores and come back out without knowing what's in the stores. So it makes sense. I used to park there myself in '77, in the beginning of '78, and really enjoyed it. It was fun. But I really enjoy it now that I can sit outside and don't have the car fumes. So those people should really be part of the discussion. And again, I've talked to some of them and they feel like they're excluded and that's not really the case. Nobody's excluding them, but they already feel like it's a done deal and they have nothing to say. So I'd say tread lightly, be careful.
Thank you, Ben. Dave?
Again, the can and the road scenario, you know, this is another study we paid money for. It was done by a renowned economist, Mr. Basu, who has worked closely with the Hogan Administration. And, you know, I support full implementation of the plan. The data shows that this gives downtown the shot in the arm that it needs. It helps it grow and it connects businesses with consumers again. The M&amp;T building is being donated for the purpose of being converted into a boutique hotel. At about 50 rooms, say, full occupancy plus employees, you're looking at potentially 125 more people in the mall any given day all year long. So it really paints a different picture. You know, you're talking about one lane of traffic, possibly one lane for parking. I do support the bike lane because it's going to be similar to like a center street type of street where it will be narrow, but that's only going to be about five or six feet. Okay, on the other side, you're still looking at about 25 to 30 foot sidewalks and it maintains the beauty and the integrity of downtown. So I totally support implementing the plan.
Thank you, Dave. Next question will go first to Joshua Greis. What is your opinion of the formation and structure of the Cumberland Economic Development Corporation?
I believe that the way that things are now, it kind of makes people a little bit nervous that it's not this city entity. It feels like it's kind of like this outside group. It feels kind of exclusive, like where you just don't feel, you kind of feel like you don't really know what's going on there. And I think that that's something that concerns a lot of people. I think that that's something that concerned people, especially when the Rolling Mill Project seemed like it came out of nowhere. Like I said, I support the Rolling Mill Project, but Eugene touched on that earlier where people just felt like they just didn't really know what was going on and they weren't in the loop. So I think that that's a big concern for people, but I feel like they've really, they've made big strides and they have good plans. And yeah, so I mean, I support the current structure of it, but I can see where it definitely seems like it's a little bit, it's a little bit exclusive and you don't really feel like you know what's going on there.
Thanks, Joshua. John?
I believe in it. I believe, I believe, I've met with Mr. Herschberger. I understand the process. I believe it's good for Cumberland. And whereas it has, I think since it's new, it'll certainly evolve into part of what Cumberland is. The plans and the ideas that are coming out, I think are well thought through. I think the people who are involved, and it's a small group, they do report back to the city. It's not a secretive type of organization. You can go in off the street and ask questions. You can ask for an appointment anytime and they pretty much are accommodating. You can ask whatever questions you would like and usually get a fairly decent response. You can argue. You can do whatever you like. So I think there is some transparency there. Could we have more? Yes. And could they maybe be out in the public eye a little more? I think that's a possibility. What they're doing is something, is a specialty service and I think as long as we continue down that path, it can't do anything but help, no harm done if we're still involved and the citizens are aware of what's going on. And I think the intent is to do greater good for Cumberland. And again, we've been talking all night about economic development. Well, what better place do you start with economic development than that with that organization? So I think we should support it. If you need some understanding of it, I think we can, that could be addressed and you should be able to obtain answers and formulate your own opinion. But overall, I think the idea of that Economic Development Corporation is a good thing and we should continue with it.
Thank you, John. Ben?
I have met some of these people near the Cumberland Economic Development Corporation and I must say that the members of that group are really concerned about Cumberland. They have proven to be innovators. They have a lot of investment in the city. And it is not that they always come up with a brilliant plan, although sometimes they do and we hope they will continue to do so. But for instance, going back to the Rolling Mills Program, that was not something that came up in the last two years. That was thought of through planning and zoning some 10 years ago or more. And they're the ones that finally pushed the button because their connections to the population, to the residents of Common, little difference. So, and they will continue to push buttons and that's what we need. So I think it's a great idea. Whoever came up with that idea is fantastic. I like the group. Like I said, I know some of the people and it's a real plus for Common to have the Cumberland Economic Development Corporation. plus for Cumberland to have the Cumberland Economic Development Group.
Thank you, Ben. Dave?
Um, I, I was going to mention, uh, getting, getting back to Rolling Mill again, uh, why there wasn't private, uh, or excuse me, public meetings. You know, we offered and continue to offer to meet with any individual, anytime, any place. Basically, your business isn't everybody else's business. We conducted various meetings with folks over time. Obviously, about sixty, uh, properties have sold out of the whole sector as of this time, out of approximately seventy. So we, we were doing, doing something right. We had multiple, multiple meetings, leading up to the, uh, development of our, uh, economic team and economic plan. I believe many of the projects that have been brought to us have been a result of the CEDC. Uh, I think it, it gave economic development a new direction, it helped it grow immensely, and I, I support our director, and I, I support the CEDC.
Thank you, Dave. Eugene?
Um, as far as the Economic Development Corporation is concerned, um, I have my problems with it a little bit. I've been at every council meeting now.